All right, you need to 1:00 o'clock. We will call the business meeting of the Klickat County Commissioners to order. To record show, all three commissioners are present. We will start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. And do I have a motion for the business agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the business agenda with an add-on under miscellaneous introduction to the Washington State Small Business Disaster Grant Program.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the business agenda with one add-on. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the commissioner meeting minutes of February 14th and February 21st, 2023 as presented.
And I'll second.
Here we have a motion in a second. Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes for February 14th and 21st, 2023, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, motion passes. All righty, we are in for citizen comment. Citizen comment will be limited to three minutes. Please keep it pertinent to items not on our agenda today. If you have comments related to any of the public hearings that we're going to be having going forward, please save those comments for the public hearing. With that, do we have anybody in the room that wants to make public comment? I'm seeing none. We'll go online. Anybody online have public comment outside of the scope of what's on the agenda? I see Vern, Vern has hand up. Go ahead, Vern.
Hi, good morning, commissioners. How are you?
I'm good, sir. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please give your name and general location for the record. Sorry, I forgot to ask.
Okay, sorry. I'm Vern Harple. I represent the Lisle Community Council. I'm here to just give you an update on what's going on with the Click That River Delta. You, we have an official project manager from the Forest Service now assigned to us, and we are meeting with her. Her name is Claire West on Thursday at 10:30. I'm keeping Commissioners Oler aware of all this. Former Commissioner Sauber will be joining us, plus a couple other people. This is going to be just an informal site visit to see, get an idea of what our goals and visions are for this. So I just wanted to keep the, let the commissioners know that we're, I'm still at it. The other thing is allow community council meeting tomorrow night. We have had some communication with WASDOT, and we have now been mentioned as a problem with the Highway 14 congestion study. We are officially now a recognized problem. And while they didn't say they would do it, they said they wouldn't mind if we gravel the parking lot and put up some signs about how to safely get under the, under the bridge. So we're going to present this at the Law Community Council and see if we can't get some volunteers to gravel and put up some signs. And then finally, I'm asking Clickat County's representative, Sandra Clark, to the Gorge Commission to start helping me with a presentation to present to the Gorge Commission to get them involved with what we're doing. It turns out that we just find, need to find somebody who isn't afraid of the railroad, or they can handle them, and it's clearly out of the county. The Forest Service doesn't want to do it. I'm not sure it will take maybe the Supreme Court. I'm not sure who will take on the railroad. But we're just going to keep campaigning this problem. It's a recognized problem now by WASDOT officially in writing and by the Forest Service. So that's my report. I'll take any question at the end of your comments if you'd like.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Harple. The one thing I would note is Sandra Clark is not the Gorge Commission appointee anymore. She resigned, so we will be appointing a new one, and we might have discussions on that later today.
Wow, the way I was just told by the Gorge Commission today that she is.
We have a resignation, so, and other applicants. So we'll, we'll be discussing that maybe later today, if not ASAP soon, and, and then you'll have the information you need going forward. With that, my seatmates may have more at the end, but for now, that's good enough. Any, anybody in line, in the room? No? All right, back online. Any public comment online pertaining to anything not on our agenda today? 7211, please name and general location for the record.
Greg Wagner with seats. Two weeks ago, the Dallasport Airport was discussed and the fact that Mr. Wilcox is a board member. Dan stated Mr. Wilcox has a conflict of interest and should recuse himself because he may benefit financially from any decision he may make. Dan Christopher was correct. Last week, we heard Mr. Anderson's concern about the solar moratorium and a conflict of interest. Mr. Anderson has two code complaints filed against him for his unpermitted short-term rental. He has been told by Mochi Limblad that he is required to obtain a conditional use permit. He refuses. He financially benefits from the continuing in operating and renting his short-term rental. Mr. Anderson has a conflict of interest and refuses to recuse himself as the code compliance officer supervisor. The code compliance officer is the county worker who is to investigate Mr. Anderson's unpermitted short-term rental. On January 12th, Mr. Anderson made the decision to not investigate short-term rentals. This is in violation of RCW 4236, the fairness of fairness doctrine, and RCW 4223 legislative ethics, both state laws. He continues to, Mr. Anderson continues to make decisions and enforces codes on citizens while he is a code violator.
Does that conclude your comments, Mr. Ranger?
No, not yet. He should not be allowed to remain the code compliance officer's boss and must recuse himself. Mr. Anderson stated it would be up to his seatmates to decide, to decide if he would recuse himself. How much longer will you, Mr. Christopher and Ms. Oler, allow Mr. Anderson to violate the laws and shame this board? This board does not appear to be fair to all the citizens when Mr. Anderson is allowed to violate the laws and the codes. It is time that you take the correct and appropriate action and demand that Mr. Anderson recuse himself from any participation as the code compliance officer's boss or participate in any decision or discussion on any code complaint until his code complaints are resolved and he complies with all the county codes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Anybody else online have citizen comment that they would like to share with the Board of Commissioners today? Gabrielle Gilbert, go ahead. Name and general location for the record, please.
I'm Gabrielle Gilbert, Fruit Valley. First off, Commissioner Anderson has due process, and any attempts on community members to smear him in a public forum and deny him his due process is unacceptable. And I'm going to be clear, he can stand on the board because he was elected to this board, and he will do the work that the people that sent him there to do. Number two, on Friday, I babysat. I babysat for a mama so that she could get to a medical appointment, and I babysat for that same mama so that she could get to work. Those issues of functioning in your community, being able to go to medical services that benefit economically from people arriving at their appointments, and it benefits people who are able to care for themselves and be cared for. It benefits families when they are able to go to work, and that economic benefit is tied into the economic security of a county. It is important for this county to address childcare and the desert that we live in. Today, I babysit three families, and I will be cycling around three families when I pick those kids up from school and deliver them to their destinations and then work into the evening. So childcare is day and night, and the idea that we need to address childcare is something we care about and look at it in pure economic terms is important for this board to do. I asked this board to come and meet an amazing woman who ran a childcare service out of her home for 33 years. The discussion about the regulations and how they're stifling. You need to sit down and actually speak to someone who's been in the business, who, who's recently retired from it. You need to be proactive in how you're going to address the things that you say you care about. And so those are my comments for today. Oh, and about Culp being hired for the jail, here's the deal. That was kept so under wraps for so long, right up to the day when he, when Sauger announced that he was the hire. And I'm going to be clear, extreme right-wing views coming into the county, extreme anti-government views, extreme authoritarian views, they will be literally clapped back on, and we will hold them accountable. So that's important for the Sheriff's Department and the new hire to understand. And, you know, that's how elected officials are held accountable for the decisions that they make. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Anybody else online have any public comment today? Sherry, go ahead. Name and general location for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Sherry from Housam. I would like to talk about environmental studies that are done in Clickat County and how our county has the ability to hire out for environmental studies so they're fair and impartial, and then our county can charge the applicant back for these studies. But at this point, our county allows the applicants to hire who they want, pay who they want, and get the studies they want done. This has got to change. Corporations are taking advantage with their private studies. This happened to us in Undercampus. It's shameful. Our county should be doing the environmental studies. And with that said, I'd like to bring your attention to Tetra Tech. I know that one of the commissioners has been forwarded some information. Tetra Tech is the company who does all the environmental studies for our solar here in Clickat County, or most of them, quite a few of them, if not all of them. And then our county accepts these environmental studies at face value with no questions asked that the applicant has hired and has submitted. Tetra Tech is now, let me read from this, being sued by the Department of Justice of what is being called the biggest case of eco-fraud in U.S. history. This company must be looked into immediately before our county accepts any more environmental studies by this company. It goes much further, much more deeper than this three minutes allows. You must be responsible and check into this before you accept more environmental studies. And also, so I've put that on record as our county moves forward. Also, I would like to have and request a facility site tour of our crowning jewel of Washington State called Lund Hill, the largest solar array project in Washington State that our county has. I would like our commissioners to arrange for the public, since it's gone online, it's gone live now, is what's been published. I don't know if that's true. You would have to verify that, for the public to go tour this facility so we can have a great understanding of what an industrial site, a solar site, looks like. You went to Primeville to look at a very, very much smaller site. You drove seven hours. You can arrange for the public to go see Lund Hill, and I'm requesting that. And you to look into it, check or check. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boxke. Any other, I do have public comment in the room. Please come forward to the mic, make sure the mic is green, and give your name and general location for the record. Remembering that public comment should not be about what's on the agenda later today.
Hi, my name is Brian Walsh. I work for Avon Grid Renewables, and I live in Portland, Oregon, and our company built the Lund Hill Solar Project. I just wanted to respond to Sherry's comments just now that we'd be happy to give the commissioner tour of the facility. Once it's done and out of construction, we'd be, be happy to accommodate that and bring you out to the site, and look forward to scheduling that so you can reach out to me about making that happen. Just far as, as far as Tetra Tech goes, Tetra Tech is permitted and worked on a large share of the renewable energy projects in the Pacific Northwest and across the country. They have specialists and scientists that are accredited and that stand by their work, and they wouldn't be worth that if they didn't have their accreditation. And so it's in their best interest to do work that is that way, and I'm not aware of them being sued by the Department of Justice for environmental fraud, but they've done an outstanding job for us in permitting projects. And if it'd be helpful, I can provide a list to the commission and the public of all the projects that Tetra Tech has worked on that haven't had any complaints in the, in the past or present. So anyways, that's all I wanted to say about that, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Any other public comment in the room? Not seeing any. Let's go back online. Any other public comment online for the Board of Commissioners today? Not seeing any. Do any of my seatmates want to respond to any comments, or shall we wait until 1:25 or, or discretion?
I'm doing some research right now.
I could respond to Vern if that's okay.
Sure.
Vern, I have not forgot you. I've stayed in, in touch. I'm reading all your emails and communications and keeping up, and I've said it before, as a new commissioner, I'm swimming as fast as I can. I do have interest in your project, and I'll be back. But thank you for continuing, and I wrote down your updates, and I will see you soon. Thank you.
I see online 0088 has unmuted themselves. Do you have comment for the record, sir?
Yeah, Delmar Eldred, Goldendale. And looking over the documents for the franchiseeism for Bluebird, which is...
Sure that it's part of the record today, and that testimony will need to be taken during the public hearing?
Okay, well, the second part of that is what is it going to take for the commissioners to sign a constitutional county resolution and a Second Amendment, a Second Amendment sanctuary resolution? If you're any aware of what's going on in Olympia right now, you can see that they're bill by bill, they're dismantling the Constitution and especially the First and Second Amendments. And the Constitution was put there for protection against the overreach of government, and that is what's going on in Olympia right now. I mean, you're looking at 950 bills that they have to present. Idaho started their legislative session the same time as Washington did. They have 15 bills they have to present. So you can see what kind of predicament we're in, then the attack that we're facing for total government control is what they want to do. And our only protection is that we have a county that we do not recognize unconstitutional laws and the takeover of Olympia of our county. And I, I think that the commissioners should really start considering exactly what is going on here. And, and the Seattle chapter of the Socialist Democratic Party have a heavy influence in Olympia, and they have no use for the Constitution, whether it be state or federal. And that's why I, I'd really appreciate you guys getting together with Sheriff Sauger, and he can bring up the resolutions, and all you have to do is sign them. And I think it's time for you people to start protecting the citizens of Clickat County and instead of kowtowing, kowtowing to the Olympia power structure. That's all I have for the day.
Thank you, Mr. Eldred. Anybody else online have public comment today? Lynn Mason.
Thank you, commissioners. This is Lynn Mason. I live in White Salmon. I just wanted to comment on the latest news this week, that being the hiring of Lauren Culp, a highly controversial figure in Washington State, and someone that was let go by his own city council because they felt that they didn't need his services as a police officer anymore. I know you have no say in who is hired at the Sheriff's Department, but this fellow is another CSPOA favorite, and I fear he's going to be bringing a lot more of the CSPOA agenda to Clickat County. So I, I think that's something that the commissioners should definitely be thinking about. Also, an article came out this week about the senseless killing of a cougar kitten. And it just makes me wonder why if cougar issues are less than 7% of the issues that the Sheriff's Department deals with, why are they spending so much time and resources even though apparently the posse part is free? Why are they sending deputies and people out to address these cougar issues if, A, no one's actually been killed by a cougar in Clickat County, and only two in Washington State in over 100 years? And also, speaking to Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, cattle are rarely on the menu item of cougars as well. So why are we spending so much time and energy eradicating cougars in our county and spending so much of our sheriff's resources to do that? It makes one wonder. There's also an article that came out on the pump storage project and just another green energy project that is impacting people of color, the Native American community, and, and I don't hear a lot of talk about that at the community, at the Board of County Commissioner meetings. So just curious why, why there's that more discussion about that? And also just a plug for the Clickat County Animal Shelter for public health and safety, and how that is very much needed, and that is actually an important item that comes up frequently and calls to the Sheriff's Department and needs to be addressed, and we have money for it. So I would really like to actually see it happen because I...
Thank you, Ms. Mason.
Benefit to our county. Thank you.
1:23, we have time for one more if we have another citizen looking to comment. Any public comment not on the agenda for later today? Last call. All righty, hearing none. Do my seatmates have any responses that they would like to give? Hearing none. I will...
Oh, I didn't know. I thought Laura was going to go first.
No, go ahead.
Go ahead. You usually get to go last.
Oh, I'm not going much here. I'll comment to Mr. Wagner about the Dallasport Airport Board, Jim Wilcox, potential conflict of interest. I will have to say that my interpretation or my personal views on conflict of interest must be different than state views because we did put in a legal request for that, and it was deemed as not a conflict of interest. So Mr. Wilcox will be continuing to sit on that board. You asked the question of how long will we allow Mr. Anderson to not recuse himself? It is up to the elected official to recuse themselves if they so choose. Not up to me or my seatmates. What else is up here? A bunch of political stuff. It looks like Ms. Boxke got her answer, or potentially her answer to Lund Hill. Lund Hill is a private company. I don't get to arrange a tour for the public. If you would like a tour of Lund Hill, you can reach out to the operators of Lund Hill and see if they're accommodating of a tour. I have not walked through the establishment, but I'm actually out there about every three weeks. They don't know that, but now they do. Well, he does know that because he hears me complain about Middle Road all the time. So he's aware. And that's all I have. Anything, Mr. Anderson?
No, I would, I would just also second that we did put in for the PA opinion request, and that came back that in the short, it is not a conflict of interest. People like to think they know what the law is, but there's quite a bit of a difference between what the law is and what you want it to be. With regards to the comments from Mr. Eldred about the Second Amendment Sanctuary Resolution, I was never in favor of the sanctuary cities, and I'm not in favor of the Second Amendment Sanctuary. And not only that, the, the people who actually do get to interpret the law, the Oregon Court of Appeals ruled that local governments cannot declare themselves Second Amendment sanctuaries. That was just heard in Columbia County versus the state of Oregon. If that's what the, the rules are being said, or the opinions of the courts, and if this is at the Court of Appeals, I don't know why we would want to put ourselves into a lawsuit on Section Amendment Sanctuary cities so that we could get sued as well. With regards to the Constitutional County Resolution, I will say, as I've always said, the county commissioners and our elected officials follow the Constitution, saying we need to declare ourselves a constitutional county in which we have preemption or preemptive authority over the state or federal government. I wouldn't do that because we clearly don't. We are a subdivision of state government. People like to forget that. With regards to talking about Lauren Culp, who was a political figure, just as all three of us sitting up here are, I would like to wish our new Lauren Culp, who took the, the position of the chief jail deputy, all the best in his job, and we all wish for all of our employees to do the best that they can. And most of the time, we try to leave politics out of everything we can. With regards to the cougar kitten killing, you, you should always talk to the, to the sheriff. We don't, we don't play in other people's sandboxes. Ask the sheriff to hold a town hall. Ask your questions. He has an open door policy. I wish you the best in helping him understand your perspectives. And then with regards to the pump energy storage project, I read that as well. I would like everyone to also realize that both the upper and lower reservoir are on private property. They're not on state property. And that in that article, if you look at it closely, the tribe was choosing to not enter into consultations with the, the operator and the government. And it was a really well-written article. And with regards to the animal shelter, again, please talk to the sheriff about that as it's his department and his people that are working on it. With regards to Ms. Gilbert, thank you as always for keeping childcare at the forefront of our minds, and thank you for your kind words and support. And with regards to Vern, keep working on it, Vern. Hopefully, one day, the, the railroad someone out there, I don't know if it would have to be above the president, will have some control over the railroad. But I wish you all the best and keep working with... But I wish you all the best and keep working with Lori. She's great and I'm sure she'll keep on it as well. With that, I, I think that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. I will go back and echo that to Vern. The fact that you have the the determination to continue the fight against the entities that we all know you're fighting. If we can help you, by all means, we're there for you. But wow, that's, that's some courage. So thank you for that fight. Your fight for the people is noted. We see it. We appreciate it. Just wanted to pass that on before I closed. With that, we'll call it the end to citizen comment. Now being that it is 1:30, it is a time for public hearings, public meetings and bid openings. We have a bid opening for the purchase of liquid asphalt for the 2023 paving season. The total estimated project cost range is between $800,000 and $1 million. Do we have a staff report and/or bids?
Okay, we have three bidders. Because there was no bond required, I don't have to worry about that. Our first one is from Idaho Asphalt Supply. That makes it a little more difficult.
They make you go scrolling?
There we go. Okay, it looks like total bid, I hope this is the only page. Total bid is in the amount of $874,178. Next up, we have Ergon Asphalt Emulsions. Total bid, And I should usually say where they're from. Ergon is from Pasco. Okay, well, it says Pascal on whatever it's sent to me. Next up, we have Albina out of Vancouver, Washington. Please, Albina. Who was that last one?
724.
Albina out is $727,087. Wow. That's close.
Have we ever used that Ergon before?
Yes.
Okay, I know that one. I know that name, so that makes sense. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to send these three bids back to the Public Works Department for a review and recommendation.
All right, we have a motion for review and recommendation. We have a second for sending these back to Public Works Department for review and recommendation. Any comments? I will make one. I'm happy with the bids. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, moving on, moving to the public hearing. In accordance with statutory statutory provisions of RCW 3655 and RCW 8032, in accordance with Clicktack County's accommodation of utilities on county road wide away policy, the county commissioners for hold a public hearing prior to granting a non-exclusive franchise for the construction, maintenance and operations of wires and other apparatus upon, under, or alongside, or across various Clicktack County roads. The applicant is Bluebird Solar Power LLC. Do we have a staff update of any kind before this public hearing? As I say, I was thinking maybe COVID pricing is over.
Okay, I'll give a quick staff report, which I prepared. There's been, there's been a few questions. I want to answer some of those too, so maybe that'll help what we have going. First of all, what is a franchise agreement? It's not to sign up for Wendy's or anything like that. Franchise agreement is a protection for the county for the county taxpayers. What it is, is it allows utilities, mainly private utilities, but we have signed them with public utilities in the past also to say with after a five-year period that those utilities, if the county needs to use their right of way, they have to relocate on their dime, not on the county taxpayers' dime. Without a franchise agreement, there is no binding agreement. Once we give a permit to those utilities, that they have to relocate. That's what the franchise agreement does. Takes our liability from having to pay that or the taxpayers for, for as long as those utilities are there. That's also means they are not, they're also not just for that utility. There can be other people in that right of way area, other utilities. That's what a franchise agreement, in a nutshell, that's what they are. It does not give them the right to actually, they still have to get a permit to put in those utilities. This does not, this does not permit that process, doesn't circumvent that process. They still have to come to the county to get that. Solar, this solar farm is not, this is not, this is not unusual. We have signed these with wind farms. We've also signed them with gin and cable. We have signed them with, we're working on one with a Vista for countywide. Usually that's what you see as countywide as opposed to just an area. Bluebird Solar only needs to be in within that area. I've seen questions of why it's Bluebird Solar. It's basically the farm. Though if they sell the farm tomorrow, that franchise goes with whoever buys that farm. So they will also be responsible to relocate the line. So they can't sell the farm and get out of relocating the lines. So we talked, and there's many other, we do them with fiber and we do other things like that. So quick utility polls that if they're located within the right of way, they would be out of the clear zones. We actually, we have 60 feet of right of way in the southern portion of the of these, of this franchise agreement, and we have prescriptive rights in the northern portion. This agreement only consists of Big Horn Road and a small area. I should have printed a big map, but there is a map in your packet that explains that area. By signing this agreement, it does not give the county any rights or Bluebird any rights unless they work it out to put their lines on any private property. It's only for what the county has rights to. And again, I say, after a five-year period, and why, why this was, they use a five-year period. After five-year period, then they are on the hook to move the, to move their, at their cost. The reason they say a five-year period, if, if we had a project planned on our six-year tip that said we were doing a project at Big Horn, then Bluebird would have an opportunity to either enter into the franchise or they could say, I'm not doing that until after that. I know you got a project. Be honest with you, we have no plans for any projects on Big Horn and I don't see any in the long-term future, to be honest. People that have been out there, there's not much there and most of that area is now green energy. So that pretty much, or that does include my staff report. Let me finish. I did one more. In the view of these findings, again, I'm not going for or against whether the solar farm goes there. I'm only looking at how this impacts the county right of way. And in that, Public Works does not find any issues that negatively impact the public, the use of the public right of way to put in utilities. If I tell them no, I have to tell everybody else no. So how does people get their power? How do they get their how do they get their fiber there? Again, that's not my call. That's just what I'm, that's your call. That's just what I'm
I, I do have two clarification questions.
Aye.
Just to make sure I understand it correctly. So technically, this is, franchise agreement is there to protect the county. So technically, this is not something the, in this case, a solar developer wants. It's something the county is demanding to make sure that our taxpayers are not at expense later for any charges that come up because we need the lines moved.
You are correct.
Okay. And the reason you're not taking into consideration a SEPA EIS for giving a franchise agreement is because if it ever gets done, they will have to apply for a permit. And during that permit process, will be the EIS and a SEPA determination and all of that kind of stuff. This is just a model decommissioning plan and in a sense where we're protecting the county's resources, protecting the taxpayers.
That is correct. Yes. Yes. It has nothing to do with the actual construction of the of the thing. And like I said, we will, you will see one that is more what you, what they've done in the past here shortly with the Vista where they do countywide. Again, each project stands alone, but just like you said, it is a protection for the tax.
So pretty much every fiber line or cable line or phone line or anything that's ran down a county right of way, run right of way has had one of these or probably should have had one.
You are correct. They definitely should have if they didn't.
I want to talk about that. That was before. This is now.
Yes.
Thank you, sir, for that clarification. Any questions for my seatmates before we begin the public hearing? Or the public comment section of the public hearing? If that, I don't have the actual flow chart in front of me. Probably should have prepared for that. With that, we'll open the public comment. Does anybody in the room have testimony? In the room, testimony for or against the issuance of the franchise agreement? Do you want to testify now or now it is? Okay, come forward, sir. State your name for the record. I believe you're going to need to use the Zoom, so let's allow the gentleman to share his computer before we start the clock.
Hi, my name's Ken Nichols. I'm here representing Avengrid Renewables and Bluebird Solar Power LLC, the applicant.
Hey, let us get you set up first. I won't give you three minutes and five seconds now. So we'll get you fully set up and then we'll say go. And then you go. Yep, make sure you can, well, he wants to run, so he needs to share and
He needs to have access to share his
I got that. We tested it before you got here. And it still works.
All right, with that, we can't see the clock, so I will run one personally. Go ahead, sir. Name and general location and provide your testimony.
Hi, I'm Ken Nichols. I'm here representing Avengrid Renewables and Bluebird Solar Power LLC, the applicant for this franchise agreement. Avengrid Renewables headquartered in Portland, Oregon, and I reside there. And I think the packet that Public Works put together, the last page has a really good map as well of this. But just generally, you know, this is Big Horn Road, which is south of Pickleton off of Middle Road. It's a gravel road and it's a 60-foot right of way. The proposed franchise agreement, again, in that last page of the, the document that you guys received talks about this particular area of where the franchise agreement is is focused and is limited to. We have two crossings over Big Horn Road. Both of them emanating and starting at what would be a proposed or proposed substation. And they're crossing Big Horn Road in order to intertie to an existing transmission line, or we call it a genti line, that runs from the Big Horn substation to, to the Bonneville line. And we, by the way, Avengrid Renewables owns that genti line that we'll be interconnected to. As far as the geometry of this, I don't, I'm not sure how important some of this is, but the first crossing that goes basically right across the street, it's the southern one here. I call it crossing one, but it's a 156-foot span. So the poles are outside of the county right of way. And it's a 35-foot wide three-pole span. And, and the way they do this is it's a 32-foot distance from the road to the lowest conductor. And that's the lowest conductor, they, they spec it at 212 degrees Fahrenheit, because when, when transmission lines, when it's hot and they're, and they're used a lot, they sag. So that's why there's this different distance and it's the 32-foot is the height between the road and the lowest conductor. The second crossing is further north. Slightly different pole structure. This time there'll be single steel poles with two conductors below a third conductor. And this one, the span is 314 feet. Again, poles will be completely outside of the county right of way. There's an 18-foot width between the conductors. And again, same thing, 32-foot distance between that lowest conductor point and the road.
Thank you, sir, for your testimony. We will let's go back online and see if there's anybody online that wants to give testimony for or against the issuance of this franchise agreement. You have testimony online, please unmute yourself, raise your hand. Sherry Basque, please. Name and general location for the record, please.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity. I've sent you, oh, Sherry Basque, Houston. I sent you all three commissioners an email earlier. And I'm going to try to go over as much as I can, but you have my email with all my questions regarding this franchise. First off, the public was not given this information, nor, nor did Jeff Hunter give all the information he gave prior to this public hearing for us to be able to testify accordingly and be educated on the fact. We were told we had to wait till the third and we had four days to look at it, two of them non-working. The Bluebird Solar Development EIS has not even been approved yet. Mochi is drafting, your planning director is drafting another EIS for this Bluebird project. If this project is not even approved yet, why is the corporation running transmission lines as something that is not approved? What is, what if the county doesn't approve that Bluebird EIS? What if they don't approve this project? This is putting the cart before the horse. What is the hurry with signing this franchise agreement when the project is not even approved yet? Who ran the transmission lines to Lund Hill? Why is a corporation doing their own utility lines? Why isn't RPUD running utility lines and charging the corporation for it? And I heard there wasn't going to, or there would be a SEPA later. Who will inspect these lines? I guess that all comes later. I have to bring to your attention again what is currently happening in Maine. Did Avengrid violate their franchise agreement in Maine? I've brought this to the county's attention before and you must look into the I've brought this to the county's attention before, and you must look into the Avengrid Transmission Maine lawsuit issue. You must look into this. What happened with that transmission line? I've been told, okay, I'm going to go on to this. Most importantly, I would like to point out that Bluebird Solar Power LLC is a corporation developed just for this project. I have attached this, I sent you the information. This corporation was formed out of Delaware. Who is the corporation services company that is the registered agent? And why, why does this registered agent have 37,109 corporations? I would like you to look into this, Bluebird Solar Power LLC further. And you, I mean, there is really no accountability, and that I have a lot of concerns. I think, as my time's running out, quite frankly, if you cannot answer all these questions, I understand you're telling it to protect us, but I do not believe you need to sign this franchise agreement today, that there is more to look into. The project has not been approved yet. There's no hurry in running lines and doing all this. So as we are holding back on looking at what the solar development really looks like, I am hoping that the commissioners today understand that it's not a vital agreement to be signed today, and we can look at this further and look into the concerns I've emailed you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Basque. Anybody else online have public testimony for or against the issuance of this franchise? 7211, go ahead. Name and general location for the record, please.
Greg Wagner with C. Commissioners, the notice of this franchise agreement was placed in the paper of records two weeks prior to the hearing. At that time, the franchise agreement document had been available for the citizens, but it was not. It was made available only upon request four days prior to this hearing. That was not enough time for the citizens to review, research, and question the appropriate county staff about the franchise agreement. This franchise agreement is the standard agreement used by the county and should have been completed and available to the citizens when the legal notice was placed in the paper of record. Bluebird Project site-specific EIS has not been completed and full scoping process is needed before signing of the franchise agreement. This franchise agreement is to allow Bluebird the right to run high-voltage power lines on additional power poles along and over existing roads. With the project still in review and the permitting process, it would be premature to sign the franchise agreement until all the studies have been completed. The county does not know if Bluebird Solar will be permitted. The county comprehensive plan, a land use plan states utilities will be placed underground. Will the county violate its own land use planning by signing the franchise agreement? Why aren't our county experts in high-voltage power line construction the Clickitat County PUD in charge of building this power line? We are told by Mr. Anderson, he wants to keep it local. Why don't we start here with the Clickitat County PUD building the power line? That would create jobs for local people. The county will, the county then will be assured that the power lines meet the electrical codes and are safe for operation. There will be no need to trust the applicant and no worries of being sued if Clickitat PUD does the work. If Bluebird Solar fails to comply with any of the terms of the franchise agreement, what penalties are in place? Will the power lines be removed? Will Bluebird Solar be terminated? Has Bluebird Solar been billed for all the county staff time per Clickitat County Code Citizens would not be able to receive a building permit until their bill for county staff time was paid in full. The franchise agreement should not be signed until that bill has been paid in full and all the Bluebird Solar required studies be completed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Anybody else online wishing to receive or to give testimony for or against the franchise agreement? Unmute yourself, raise your hand. Speak up. Seeing none, go back in the room again. Anybody else? Sing up. There we do. Okay, come forward. State your name for the record, please.
Chairman Christopher, Commissioners Anderson, Zeller, my name is Brian Walsh from Avengrid Renewables. I am here to speak in favor of the franchise agreement. I just wanted to first address a couple of the comments that are out there to give the general public the assurances. If we don't receive a permit from the county for Big Horn Solar, we won't be building this overhead line to cross the franchise, or cross the Big Horn Road, and so the franchise agreement wouldn't be necessary. But why we're, we are asking for it now is because in order to even get a construction loan, we have to get all of our real estate rights accounted for into an ALTA survey and a policy, and get that issued prior to being able to even go out for a construction loan. So that takes months of advanced work of getting everything in line and placed before that. And as this is our, our main power line, overhead line, that'll connect the solar plant to our existing genti line, you know, it is key and essential for the entire project to cross a public road. And this is not unlike lots of other, people have to get across a county road to get somewhere. We're simply trying to get our, get to our own power line, our 230 line, that we own and operate, which is not a public line, and the only way to get there is to cross the road. So we have to apply for a franchise agreement to get there. And again, it is to protect the county and its citizens in case you have to move those facilities in the future for safety or any other reason. And we agree with entering into a franchise agreement, but it's, it's not an option for us. We have to. So that's why we're applying for it now. There was a comment about why, why doesn't K-Pud own the lines? I'm like, this is a private entity. These are private lines. Like, there, there isn't any, serving any general public off this line, and it's a 230, 230,000 KB line, and that's our interconnection voltage with Bonneville. So voltage, it has to be that high of a voltage to tap our existing 230 line. And, yeah, you just don't put lines like that underground either. It's just not cost-effective or efficient to do that, like putting high voltage, it's because you need the air to dissipate the heat, and that's why K-Pud's lines of the same voltage and 115 are all above ground. So no different than those other lines. So, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Anybody other, sorry, any other testimony for or against in the room or online? Not seeing any going once. Going twice. I'm seeing no more testimony that people would like to give. With that, now we're entering into the board's opportunity to request clarification of the public statements, as well as to ask questions of staff, if there's anything you have questions on, to staff or the people testifying today.
I have no questions, no.
My question would be, is, is the applicant is required to pay fees to the county for the processing of this application, correct?
Yes, they have to pay for the advertising.
And they have paid that?
If not, proceed to check. Please send it to, they will not get a permit.
Right, right.
So to answer that for you people online that might not have heard it because he wasn't near a mic, yes, they have been sent a bill. They haven't paid it yet, but they have been sent a bill for all costs incurred in this franchise agreement, including the newspaper printing. Any other questions, sir?
No, this is.
I have none. A clarification statement. We, we can't withhold every project and every decision until the public has done its due diligence and learned enough about an issue to render its opinion. Nor do we have the time to sit down with the public and try to educate them on every issue that comes before us. So, I don't know what to do with that. With that, I have no questions. Is there any further comment, any further public comment, public testimony for anyone that has not had the opportunity to provide public testimony?
Could I do a clarification?
Sure.
So looking at this, so it's very clear for people who have asked questions for us as a board, this is almost like one of those legalese items that there's a lot of different permits out there, a lot of different projects. This is what's before us today, and so it's called a narrow view, and this is what we look at today, the facts, the findings, and what's going on with this one, and that's what we answer for today. No, no.
Yep. I would agree. There's 20 different steps to a permit for any project. This is just one step that doesn't have to do with SEPA. Any further discussion by the board? Oh, with that, before I go there, I will close the public hearing to further testimony. Any further discussion by the board? Hearing none. With that, I will close the, this public hearing has been closed to further public testimony. I would entertain a motion to approve or disapprove of the granting of the franchise agreement.
Do you want me to?
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the granting of a franchise agreement between Clickitat County and Bluebird Solar Power LLC.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, the second, to approve granting of the franchise agreement between Clickitat County and Bluebird Solar LLC. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those, all those agree, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone here.
Chairman Christopher, just for the record, I'm going to have to leave at 2:30.
Okay. What time do we got now? Okay, you want to jump out of order and pay bills or consent agenda to make sure you get them done?
And then I can sign. Mr. Christopher.
Hang on just a sec, sir. I will recommend, before we go there, since we didn't get any board pending this morning, I'm going to recommend that we poll agenda item as soon as I can find it, which of course, I'm not going to have it open. For me, it's agenda item number seven, which is the EMS appointment, until we can schedule with the EMS board to come before us and give us an update on that whole situation. So that would be my recommendation, is to poll number seven, if I have board support.
And I have an item number two, number four, that I'd make a motion that we, that I would recommend that we poll for today, too, pending more information to be provided by the planning department and further discussion by the board.
Is it number two or number four?
Is that the correct one or no?
Number four.
Yeah.
Four is planning to schedule a public hearing on Tuesday. Oh, so they want to schedule a public hearing to be held on March 14th to consider approval of a short line substantial development permit for the pit site trailhead.
There are.
You want to hold off on scheduling the public hearing until you've received or the board has received clarification? Am I correct?
Correct.
How are we going to receive clarification?
I would imagine Ms. Solar or staff would reach out to the planning director, and she would come forward and answer any questions the board has.
Sure.
Going forward. Is that correct? So with that, I would entertain a motion on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda with five items, omitting number four and number seven.
I will second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, the second, to approve the consent agenda with five items, polling number four and number seven for future consideration. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. That was kind of organized chaos right there for a second.
We also have on board pending the request for the Clickitat Oaks Flyway, or the Wildlife Corridor, 2.5 million Colommy Land Trust. Did you guys want to sign that or not?
Did you, you're the one that wanted to see where the funding source came from, and you're more knowledgeable on our funding sources. So to me, it looked good.
It's coming from.
Different funding? Yeah, different funding, so I'm okay with it, but I wanted a clarification from you to, that you agree that it was different funding.
Just wanted to make sure, as before I sign it right here.
Pay the bills. Is that in there somewhere? You can keep digging. I'll dig, or staff will tell me what folder it's in. Bingo, bang. I'll get color coordinated eventually.
I think it's migrated a couple.
Hey, my time match is my pocket. Thank you, happy. I'm color coordinated.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve account payable warrants in the amount of $216,174.08 for the date ending March 6, 2023.
I will second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, the second, to pay the bills. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Bills paid. All right, now we'll move forward, since we're still 10 minutes early, but if you're, are you ready to roll? Cool. We'll get you started then. This is the add-on, Economic Development Director, Dave McClure, talking about the Washington State Small Business Disaster Grant Program.
Yes, good afternoon, Commissioners. I think I mentioned to you the last department update, that Department Harvest was opening up a small business disaster relief grant program. They have statewide 10 million for the northwest corner of the state to address impacts from some severe flooding recently. For the rest of the state, they have 9.7 million available. These are for, this is not a COVID grant program. This is for man-made and natural disasters such as the windstorm we experienced at the end of '21 and into '22. I have a call into Jim's, or an email into Jim Smith to see if there were extended power outages that might qualify some businesses for that. But any vetting.
Do we have to be, sorry to interrupt, do we have to be in a county state of emergency to get that, or is that a state state of emergency? No state of emergency, just?
It's, in, in the case of that windstorm, that's a DEFEMA-declared emergency, so that's automatically in the bucket. Some of the other natural and man-made disasters, fire, whatever, Commerce will look at those on a case-by-case basis, but I think they wanted to get relief to the businesses. They would be, businesses would be applying online, the grant application portal is open now. It will close on the 31st of this month. And they need, and when they submit their application, they'll include with that their funding request. Again, I think I mentioned that it, the minimum, Commerce is talking per business is 40,000. They will consider less. The maximum is 75,000. In the application, the businesses need to submit documentation for their expenses and the damages that they're seeking to recover. And Commerce will be vetting those applications. They want to work with a local partner. The target is the associate development organization such as KCPEDA. Alternatively, they can contract with a partner that would be a local government, in this the case, the county. I would suggest that if the board wants to participate in this, that we just go directly to the county and not have to do that double contracting step, because the county would be, end up contracting with the EDA to implement it, and, and that, getting all that in place takes, takes a lot of time. Our responsibility will be to assist Commerce if they need to vet those applications. Commerce will, after the application window closes for business on the 21st of this month, the Congress will compile the qualified amount in total, whether it's a quarter million, for example, or so, and they will let us know. And we will have to then submit a formal application to be the, the local partner. At this point, all they need is a word from me that, or at the direction of the board, that we will be the, we will apply to get this moving forward. So after we submit our application, we'll work with Commerce to get a contract in place to disperse the funds. Commerce will send us whatever that total amount is in a block, and which would be sent, the county would in turn send to the businesses. The amount we can request can include three percent of that total for administrative costs, or a maximum of twenty thousand dollars, whichever is the lowest, least amount. This, these are federal dollars, so they come attached with, you know, federal requirements, so we would, you know, it's subject to federal audit. I think that summarizes it. And, you know, we need to get promoting this more, we've done a little bit, but we need to get aggressive in getting the word out, or more aggressive.
I may have missed it, what is the timeframe of when your disaster happened?
I, I think it's twenty-one, let me see if I, yeah, timeframe, October twenty, October first, twenty twenty-one to present.
Okay. How quickly we forget.
Pardon?
What disasters we've had, I said how quickly we forget.
Yeah, yeah.
It went on.
Well, I think it comes down to
If you had one.
What's looked at as a natural disaster, because I mean, three weeks ago, I had sixty-five mile winds that blew the roof off my house. But because that didn't blow that hard in somebody's backyard, it wasn't a clear disaster. Any other questions? I have none.
If I could, please, I'd ask for directions to the board, from the board that the county's willing to serve, so I can make that verbal commitment to Commerce that we will, we will be the partner.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, very good, thank you.
And thank you, sir, for asking for clarification, if you didn't get it. Our goal is to make sure we give clarification, and you just pointed out that we didn't, so it was a perfect reminder for us.
You had a question of Richard on. The in-kind services for the Columbia Board Regional Airport.
Mm-hmm.
So the in-kind services, since we started the federal EDA grant process, this is a conservative estimate, but I've got forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars and fifty-seven cents.
I think I need, we need that by year.
Yeah, we need, we, we need a, yeah, we need a, we're gonna need a yearly figure for the amount of work we do on the airport, so we can counteract what Dallas Port thinks we owe them for their yearly work on the airport, or the Dallas thinks we owe them for their work on the airport.
Send it to me in email.
Okay. It would take me a sense to all three times.
Yeah, send it out, cuz we, we all wanna know.
Okay.
So, yeah, it will eventually go to Ms. Lori, who's the airport board, I would imagine, but.
Okay.
Just for point of clarification. But we'll all need to see it and have questions before it gets sent over to Dallas.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Do we want, before I leave, do we wanna consider the Landfill Gas Improvement Fund Committee's decision and recommendation to approve and formalize the commitments by the county?
Oh, I'm opposed to him, just like I was a year ago, so I haven't changed.
You're opposed to all three of them?
I think it was a bad deal, done in bad faith, and a bad negotiation, so. Not that I'm opposed to the principle of it, but I'm opposed to the distribution that was agreed upon, so yeah.
Okay, well, I would make a motion to approve the, the three projects before us that is part of the Landfill Gas Improvement Fund Committee's decision and recommendation, and that is for five hundred thousand for the Glenwood Water Treatment Plant Lift Station Rebuild Project, a hundred and forty thousand for the Rimrock Water System Wellhouse Electrical System and Pump Replacement Project, and three hundred thousand for the Ponderosa Park Water System Red Cedar Area Water Pipe Replacement Project.
And I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any discussion? I will add discussion, that I will be voting in favor of this, even though I absolutely oppose it, because I believe that we should be holding what the previous board's decision was. With that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, motion passes. Annual meeting of the Clickatack County Public Corporation. We can squeeze that in before you go, since I think you're the, the chair, I'm gonna say I'd have to scroll to get there fast enough.
Thank you.
Um. All right, so with that, I, as the chairman of the board of commissioners, will recess the commissioners' regular meeting, calling for the meeting of the Clickatack County Public Corporation.
And I, as vice president of the Public Corporation, will open the Clickatack County Public Corporation Meeting. What we will first is, our first order of business is to ratify the appointment of Lori Zoller, Resolution number zero, zero, two, two, three, dated January third, twenty twenty-three, to the Board of Directors of the Public Corporation, as required, as a result of the November twenty, November twenty-two general election.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we move to approve Resolution two, two, zero, zero, two, two, three, placing Ms. Zoller on the commission.
I will step down and second the motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you for sitting on the corporation.
Welcome to another job duty.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I will now move to open nominations for the election of president, vice president, treasury, and secretary.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would, kinda seem weird, but I would nominate us in accordance with the regular board of commissioners, with me being the president for this year. And I would then so move for Mr. Anderson to be treasurer and Ms. Zoller to be secretary.
You mean vice president for Mr. Anderson, treasurer and secretary.
There you go, sorry, yes, treasurer and secretary are the same, so I would, vice president for Mr. Anderson, and treasurer and secretary gets to be Ms. Zoller, I guess.
I will second the motion. Hearing, nothing else, all those in favor of the nomination of Commissioner Christopher as president, Commissioner Anderson as vice president, and Commissioner Zoller as treasurer and secretary, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. It is now your meeting, Mr. President.
With that, as the new acting president for the Clickatack County Board of Commissioners on the Public Corporation, I will call for the treasurer's report, and then we'll have a discussion or accept a motion.
I see it. So, um. Clickatack County Public Corporation Treasurer Report for twenty twenty-three, money market account, beginning, beginning balance as of January first, twenty twenty-two, one hundred twenty-one thousand, one hundred twelve dollars and twenty-seven cents. Twenty twenty-two interest earned, twelve dollars and eleven cents. Twenty twenty-two withdrawals, five dollar service charge. Ending balance as of twelve, thirty-one, twenty-two, one hundred twenty-one thousand, one hundred nineteen dollars and thirty-eight cents. Beginning balance as of twenty twenty-three, one hundred twenty-one thousand, one hundred nineteen dollars and thirty-eight cents. Twenty twenty-three interest earned to date, one dollar and three cents. Twenty twenty-three withdrawals, zero to date, and the ending balance as of one, thirty-one, twenty twenty-three, is one hundred twenty-one thousand, one hundred twenty dollars and forty-one cents.
I guess I kinda got a question on math there. Cuz I look at the beginning balance, and then you should withdraw a five dollar service charge and be five dollars less than that top number of one twenty-one, one twelve. Yet we somehow made it seven dollars and eleven cents.
That's because you have to look at the interest earned above it.
Well, twelve, seven, got it. But then same deal down here, I guess that one pencils out, got it, I'm sorry. I didn't see an interest earned of there. It wasn't, wasn't over here where interest earned down here is over here. We are rolling in the, we made a dollar three, it's awesome. All right. Anything else? Any comment on the treasurer's report? How often do we spend money, I'll ask staff, what do we use that fund for, and how often is it used, and maybe some?
It was used, it was used for solid waste and marketing purposes, and that was quite some time ago. It has to be used for economic fulfillment, as in creation of jobs, I do have a PA opinion request that's been filed, as we went and researched the bylaws and did a pair of opinion requests to make sure you knew how you could spend it.
How did the, how did the money get there, and how does it, cuz I, you know, it's not like we're depositing money in it every year.
No, I believe that it was some kind of a.
One-time funding, one-time?
Matter that happened quite some time ago, and that's what prompted the creation of the public corporation.
And now we're just waiting to find a way to spend it, or allowable use or something.
Whatever you guys deem, and it's out of put to spend on.
So we have no new deposits going in? I'm, we're just waiting on.
Sounds like it was a one-time thing where they had to, you know, put some COVID money somewhere ten years ago and didn't know where to put it, it had to go into a fund, they created a fund. Weird, as I say, I don't, I don't know any history where they've ever spent any, so that's interesting, I don't have the education behind that one, okay. All right, with that, I will ask if there's any further business to be conducted by the public corporation.
I would just ask, because we have no withdrawals, would it make sense to move this from a money market account into an interest-bearing account, now that interest rates are running three percent, so we could make about three thousand dollars a year versus three dollars, or seven dollars?
You know, sir, that is some damn good thinking. Cuz I didn't think about it, and yeah, that makes sense, I don't know how big of a.
Things I've been removed as the secretary, you'll have to, you'll have to have Lori do a signature, and she will have to do all that, the banking from now on, I'm no longer the secretary.
And I had that question.
I did make a motion to make her both, I thought she was both, you're the, oh, see, did you have your hand up the screen, you should, I had to give you one of these to throw at me. When I do something stupid, I thought she was both, but.
It's only up to you.
Can we?
We're still in the meeting, we can make a motion to amend that appointment, and as I'm the one that made it.
You could, you could just resign real quick.
I can appoint her the president.
No, it's not a chance, I'm, I'm non-voting.
I mean, the easiest thing is if she says she resigns, simple.
Rather than make another motion, you can resign from secretary, and then we'll have to.
Oh, that works.
Damn it, I accept your resignation.
Thank you.
With that, I will make a motion that we appoint our clerk as the secretary for the board.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion and second to fix my mistake, all those in favors, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Guess we're moving too fast for you to throw things at me. If we can look into Commissioner Anderson's suggestion, it makes total sense to me, I don't know how big of an issue it would be for the treasurer, but it makes sense. Any additional business that we need to discuss?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to adjourn the annual meeting of the Clickatack County Public Corporation.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and second to adjourn the meeting, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. Now I will reconvene the meeting of the Clickatack County Board of Commissioners and continue our afternoon regular business meeting of the Board of Commissioners.
I don't know which one you wanna touch first, but I gotta leave in seven minutes, and we've got the two fifty and the two forty, oh, no, the two forty-five to discuss. And then on the things to talk about, it'd be good to talk about the Ryan Village application, I keep getting emails on that, if we wanna discuss any of that. What do you wanna do with the chair?
Well, let's go with first, let's have a discussion about moving the solar moratorium, public meeting, continuing it from March fourteenth to March twenty-first, the reason for that is we have a scheduling conflict. If we wait till March twenty-third, or twenty-first, all three commissioners will be allowed to be present for the continuation, and that would be my recommendation. Any, any issues with that, any?
No.
Nope, none of you guys have any?
Okay.
Okay.
Um.
You need, you don't, do you need a motion for that?
I don't think so, yeah. Discussion regarding Columbia Board Regional, or Columbia Gorge Commission?
Either you wanna make a decision today, or would you like to bring two people in for review on the application?
I've reviewed the applications, and I know the people. I'm gonna leave that further discussion up to Dan, what he's looking for. I'm comfortable with knowing the people enough in the applications.
I have none.
Well, I guess I would, I would look at it that if, we haven't discussed it, if we have a different opinion, I think we need to have an interview. If we all have the same opinion, I think we can move forward with that opinion. So with that, I guess I would entertain what my seatmates are thinking, who they want, and then if we all land on the same person, I would say move forward.
For qualifications, should I just go ahead and say where I'm at, are you?
I, that's what I'm looking for, if you want me to say it first, I can.
Because of the background and qualifications, and I have met her, I, I would recommend Val Fowler.
What was her name again?
Valerie Fowler. And I have met her personally.
Okay. I will say for the record, looking over the, the applications, I landed on the exact same name. Valerie Fowler would be my recommendation. Commissioner Anderson, do you have a different?
We already have two in favor, so it doesn't really matter.
But if we have a different, I think we need to have an interview of the two choices.
Yeah, that's fine.
If you have a different, I am more than willing to hold off and, and hear.
Never met, I have not had a chance to meet the person and interview the person, so I'm going to abstain from making a decision on that. So, but we have enough, so go ahead and make the motion.
I can follow up next Tuesday with a resolution, if you would like, sir.
I, like I said, if you have a different name, or you're not sure, I am fine with waiting and interviewing if that's what you need to make.
As I said, I don't mind.
Not making a decision on this, I assume you do. Okay, it sounds like you have board consensus. What else was there? You had something with the airport or something you wanted to talk about before you left?
No.
What was that?
That was the Rhine Village.
Rhine Village.
In White Salmon. Have you guys had a chance, they're asking for a bunch of funds out of that fund, I think, if anything, we need to either invite them back up for more discussion, you, do you recall the last discussion we had, we have a lot of discussions.
Yep, I do.
And how you feel about that?
Um. I still have the same opinion, so. While it's labeled what it is, and the discussion, the sales pitch is what it is, I, I believe we're giving funding to the past owner to, you might as well call it clear bad debt, and it does not help us move forward on the project, and I am opposed to it, if my seatmate supported, that's fine. But I, I, I am opposed.
How do you feel, Lori?
The same as the last discussion we had, and then they came forward with the proposal and their information, and it still had kind of the same flavor to it, that we were paying out past debt and problems. And I, I would have hoped there would have been another way to bring that around, to make that happen, so that our funds weren't gonna be dedicated to pay out a past problem.
Who, who would like to let Jonathan know?
I can, I'm on the board.
So it's either you. So it's either you or staff, so your choice. Anything else?
Oh, I gotta, I gotta go.
How long do you need? Okay. Are you leaving or are you staying?
I gotta go, but.
Okay.
I can call in if I can. You guys have much more you want to discuss on?
I'll carry forward, we're pending for next week. I do have issues or grievances I'd like to bring up, but I'll do it next week.
I can call in as soon as I can.
I'll do it next week. Okay, come forward. I don't know, this is. But if, so you're here to discuss pulling the.
We heard earlier that.
From the agenda.
I have some questions for the planning department, so we thought we came down, we want to access now or maybe later. We just want to make ourselves available.
Do you, do you want to discuss this now or do you want to put it on the agenda for later? Your choice, your issue.
I'd like to put it on the agenda.
Okay.
And then I can send a email of what I'm looking for.
Okay, we'll come back then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's do that. And also can we reach out to EMS? I think we already in.
I have contacted them, I'm waiting for a reply back to get them in.
Thank you, motion. Okay, thank you. We didn't get a chance to talk about the mill site either.
Did you do a tour?
I did. It looks kind of how I remember it looking. I don't know, do you want to have a initial discussion on this without the third commissioner? Or do you want to wait and have a third commissioner? Or, I don't, I mean, it doesn't matter to me, nothing, I guess, I was going to say nothing we do is binding, but technically. It's binding, it's just rude.
That, that, that tour was good for me because it'd been a lot of years. And it wasn't exactly how I had it in my memory or remembered exactly where the stream was located or exactly how much pavement is out there, just. And how big the scope of that is.
So for those listening on Zoom, the three commissioners went for a tour of the Clickatet Mill Site down in Clickatet. We did it at separate times, so we were not there at the same time, in which would constitute an open public meeting. We each went for our own individual tours on what we. We don't own the property, but it's held in trust in the county because the old landlords or landowners didn't pay their taxes. So we have to decide what's going on with that moving forward, now that it's cleared ecology. So that's what we're talking about. I guess where I'm at on that is, you know, there's two avenues moving forward. It either, you know, just the treasurer's item, because it's a foreclosed property essentially. Or, you know, I used the wrong word, not foreclosed, tax title property, I guess would be the correct terminology. Which means once it clears ecology and whatnot, we have the option to. Public auction it if we think it would sell. And there's multiple discussions on, do you try to auction it the way it is? Do you spend taxpayer money to try to remove that one building? To make it more appealable to anybody buying it at option? And then there's been recommendations from the community to enter into a P3 or a, a public-private partnership to build some RV slash swimming pool slash whatever. Which for those that don't know, a public-private partnership is the government pays for everything and somebody else reaps the benefits. I am not, absolutely not in favor of the public-private partnership, regardless of how great it would be for the community. To me, it's a giant liability for the county to own that. If one person decides to dig and plant a tree and they open a hole and some black goo comes out or something, you open up a can of worms. So. It, it's going to be my recommendation to remove it from the county's holdings. In whichever way the, the best way to do that is, whether it's taking down the building, whether it's not, whether it's subdividing the property because somebody might buy part of it and not the other part of it. Or that would be my direction moving forward. Because I think the longer we hold it, the longer we're opening ourself up.
And I think.
The problems.
Margaret Newman will be coming in about that stream. And there's some very big setbacks there and they have some very big ideas. They've spent a lot of money there already. So I think once we hear what they have planned for that stream.
I wonder if they'll buy it for a dollar.
And with the setbacks and stuff, they might, it might already be where it's at for usable, anything that would be left out of that because of the configuration of that valley and what that is. With the runoff, when there is a high water event, there is not much there.
Well, that was my concern when they wanted to look at the stream and they wanted to go walk around the property and dig little holes. It's like, God, what do you find in the hole? Do you find something nasty in the hole or do you find a bone in the hole? Or do you find something that calls ecology back out again?
I think the best for the community too, right now, as we work through the fisheries part of it until they come in and tell us where at. Is I'm all in favor of working with the P U D and seeing what we can do for cleaner water for the community. That's going to be one of the best things they could ever get was better water.
And that's where I was kind of looking at shaving the property or dividing the property. You might find a piece that the P U D needs. If they were ever going to turn that into a water system down in Clickatet, they're going to need a piece of property earmarked for them. Next to that pump.
Yes.
And then you might have another piece of property that somebody's interested in buying out the Tatt County tax rolls to, you know, put more concrete on the cap and build a building on it and turn it into a gift shop or something. And they don't want all that stuff binded. So we might have to look in that direction, but. Yeah, I know they want to, you know, take the stream and what was best available science 30 years ago. And let's rip all the stream apart and make it a concrete chute with a fish ladder. And now that's not best available science anymore. And they want to rip it all out and make it a stream again. I just worry about them ripping it out. Because again, what do you turn up when you pull a piece of concrete out? And does that open up another ecology investigation for 12 years?
Well, and I think, go ahead.
I just wanted to let you know that Commissioner Anderson did join the meeting.
Oh, good.
I'm sure we'll have this discussion all over again when he's in the room.
And I think, you know, that's all going to be between ecology and the tribes and fisheries and.
Well, we have one heck of a say-so if we're still holding the property, because they don't get to do any of it unless we tell them to.
Maybe. Yeah, not.
Or any one of them can take ownership of the property and do whatever they want to.
Right. And Commissioner Anderson, he's online, he's worked, I believe, on that project over the years with the stream and the tribes. And so he's familiar with what's there.
I think it would be awesome if state parks have taken and fixed the stream and make it into a nice little park. But, you know, they're smart enough to not want to touch it with a 10-foot pole.
And they do have a strip down the front, away from the highway. Kind of, kind of divides off the property naturally from their strips. So they are in the game too at some point.
Yeah, I think we need to schedule some time on our agenda to have Public Works come in, maybe at the same time and offer out the economic development because they've been handling it. Kind of give the board an update and.
Is Margaret coming on the 16th? Would we have time for Public Works and everybody to be here while she's here? At least I'll get everybody in the same room.
Well, I think they will be at least here and listening, but I don't know if they're going to be ready to make a recommendation because that's, you know, a week away.
No.
I don't know if that's going to be ready for them to make a recommendation or if us to.
I think they should be in the room.
I think they should definitely be in the room. We should make sure they get an invite, but I don't know if we're going to be ready to make a.
No, probably not.
Determination.
No. I will have a lot.
So I, I would say let's have fisheries presentation. And then we can schedule a little bit of time for economic development and Public Works to give a presentation after. So we're not fighting each other if they have different views. And then we'll chew on it in our own brains and then schedule a time to re-talk about it after that.
I have a housekeeping issue I'd like to talk about.
Sure.
Always for me being organized and trying to find ways to keep myself on track and moving forward. If it would not be cumbersome to staff and something that you don't advise we do. Something that I had seen in other meeting minutes were when staff creates the meeting minutes, they pick out kind of the top five or top 10 agenda items or action items that we had committed to do. And they embed those as bullet points in the old business from the next agenda. So we're sure that we capture, hey, last week we said this, we were going to check what this person or do with that person. Hey Lori, did you do it? Or where are we with that action? Would that be hard to do?
That would be fine. It's usually been direction from the board that we put on the next day, the next meeting, but whatever you guys want is totally fine.
Say that would hold us, hold our feet to the fire and.
Because we've seen.
Keep us accountable because we have.
I found something way back that I was supposed to do and now I'm going to have to go ask Lee, oh my gosh, I missed it. What was?
Oh, I was.
I don't remember what I said.
I was going to be trucked potable water, but I haven't even had the time to pick up the phone. Because there's just so many other things you're working on that you're like, I'm going to get there, I'm going to get there, I'm going to get there, and I haven't got there.
We could keep them, we could cross them off or move them forward.
That's what our pending issues is, but I, and I mean, that's a fairly big pending issues list. But I kind of, you know, part of me is kind of digging the idea of throwing, you know, whatever, top four or something on there, just.
Like I committed to contact Jonathan about the Rhine Village. Gee Lori, did you do that or did that go down the pipe?
As I say, it's kind of an interesting idea that I think would.
And it's going to.
Really get us to get that 61st hour a week of employment in. 60 is not enough, dang it, I need another hour.
Justifies your 61st hour.
In my part-time job.
Makes sense.
Yeah, I, can we, can we try it? Yeah, I was going to say, let's try it and see if we can get a little more efficient on the board pending list by having some of these things on there. Because I look sometimes at the board pending list, but other times it's like.
And the little things tend to.
Yeah.
Just go, but sometimes they're very important, but we just don't get them done.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm willing to try anything.
Thank you guys. If it doesn't work, we can make it go away.
Any, any other board pending stuff? Any staff recommendations? Any, I guess I can go look on the shared drive at the board, at the pending list.
Pending issues is your issue.
I, I know, it's just I don't look at it all the time. And it's like gets to the end of it like this and it's not open and then. Right there and I don't go click and make everybody.
I'm trying to make things more visible.
That helps me.
All right, let me go through here. City of Dallas request for funding, we addressed that today. We already, I think we sent the invite out for the guy in Dallasport with the C paper, C Pacer to give us an update.
Kurt Chopper.
Commissioner Anderson negotiating with the districts, I think that's still either not ongoing or at least he's collecting more data, it sounds like. Trucked water, yeah, sorry, haven't done a thing. Public records officer position, possibly a grant writer position. I don't know that that one. I don't think the grant writer position is going to be there because we're going with this grant committee thing we had an update on. But the public records officer.
And I did meet with McKed, I think it was yesterday and we, they actually offer grant administration services. At some point, if we ever needed, you can contract to them.
Yeah.
And then I asked them too, do you do grant writing? And she said they have before, something they don't know, but if somebody wanted to reach out and ask them, we could contract to them for grant writing.
Well, she just came right in. Yes, I, I think I'd leave the public records officer thing on there because we, I don't know, it would be good to have that discussion when we have a full board if we want to. If there's any interest to try to put all the public record requests through one main person that has a spreadsheet and is managing or not. So I think that discussion needs to be had. Economic Development Natural Resources Department reorganization. He didn't mention it, but I know he hired the new economic development person, has not hired the natural resources person. So says Richard the other day when I talked to him. Because we've all seen the strange person walking in the halls and nobody knew exactly where they were. Yeah, radio system kind of talked about that a little bit this morning when nobody was executive session stuff. Town Hall still need discussion, but we need all three commissioners. Yeah. And the grant committee, we're working on A D U. Let's pull the A D U one for now. I mean, that's kind of my baby, I still want to do that, but. If. It's more about timing. Planning director's got enough on her plate that I don't want to throw another one on right now, so I will hold off and, and see how we go through the year before. Website upgrade, I mean, that's going to be on there for the next two years. IT kind of talked about that with his e-services. So that, that handles that list. Ms. Jen, did you have something for us? She's coaching. She's off the clock.
So I just wanted clarification, to provide clarification. So you had mentioned the, the public records request person slash grant writer. And in that comment, you had said to grant, you don't know if we need a grant writer because of the grant committee. A grant writer and the peer review committee would be two very different.
Right, but I think we've had that discussion and I think the discussion, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, the discussion was that we don't need a grant writer, we just need to better facilitate the grants we have.
And that might be the case. I just heard that comment and I just wanted to make sure that it.
You're not writing a grant.
Two very different.
Yeah, because grants have budget impact and we're. We don't mind some employees creating work for themselves, but other employees that create work for themselves cost us money.
Well, that would be the purpose of the peer review, right? Like a grant writer, like Jeff Hunter does, you know, is a very skilled grant writer and that's how the road.
Well, my whole thing is, I think it would be great to be able to go find grants that are out there that we may not know about. The problem is, then you got to have the match. And, and what does this person do the other 30 hours a week?
I just wanted to clarify.
So, yeah, I think that's where that died.
Okay.
But.
We're good.
Okay.
You're not writing.
You're now the grant writer.
I am definitely.
And the coach.
And everything else.
All right, get out of here. Thank you.
You, you have signatures.
Yeah, I do. I tried to get as many as I could over there for checking first. Anything else for the good of the order? All righty, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Who was that?
Who was Kate?
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead.
I was just going to ask, it seems like I've got. Service now, if you wanted to, that are on your list.
Nope, I'm covered for now.
Well then, I would make a motion to adjourn. Well then, I would make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second, I'll second.
We have a motion in.
We have a motion in.
The meeting, the meeting. I will note that we don't have any workshops scheduled for this week, but we have a workshop or we don't have any workshop scheduled for this week. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. One heck of an echo. Thanks, everyone.